Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of January 22, 2014, to order. Roll call vote is first, and that would be everyone is present, Linder, except for Mr. Mullis. And our next item of business is the superintendent search update. And we're going to have -- Mrs. Broussard will be taking over at this point.
Heidi, I'm going to jump around a little bit in the interest of time, but I've got a long list, so bear with me. Okay. So, the first thing that we need to do this evening is we need to take a vote to approve the salary range that was recommended to us by MASC for new superintendent candidates. And the range that they have shared with us is 160,000 to 170,000. And they came up with this number by taking a look at other districts in surrounding towns of similar size and what they call ability to pay. They looked at Burlington, Danvers, Tewksbury, Sharon, Melrose, Middleborough, Wakefield, and Westboro. And those are all schools that are in our range for student populations. The other interesting thing to note is the low salary for all schools fiscal year 2013 is 152, with the high end of the range at 175. So, by coming in at 160 to 170, they're being pretty conservative, yet keeping in mind the climate that we are in, being a lot of superintendent openings. So, we want to make sure that we are attractive to new candidates coming in. So, there you have it. So, we need to approve that range for our first vote. And I did give you all a copy of that information. Any questions? Short?
If you're all set, I motion to approve the recommended salary range for the superintendent search of 160,000 to 170,000 dollars.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Okay. So moved? Okay. Oh, two abstains. Mrs. Carroll? Okay. All right. And the other vote, I'm going to jump around, so bear with me. The other thing that we need to vote on is what's called the charge to the subcommittee. And on our first meeting in March, being March 12, Mike Gilbert will be joining us. And at that point, we will have the search committee seated. So, they will be joining us at that meeting, and we will need to be reading them a charge. I've given you the verbiage. I can read it. We need to approve it. But essentially, we're saying, okay, search committee, we as the school committee are giving you permission to do this for us. Okay? And they will be taking a look at a group of eight to 10 candidates, possibly more. And they will be coming up with a recommendation of the top three to five candidates for us to look at. So, at this point, any discussion on the charge? Any questions? It's pretty straightforward.
I know that notice has gone out to the PACs at the schools and district.
Yes.
How has it been thus received? And what is the -- how long will it take for them to get their delegates, for lack of a better term, to step up in?
Excellent. Thank you for asking that question. I was going to discuss that. So, yes, we have reached out to all of the district PACs as a way of helping us identify the parent group. And we are going to be selecting three parents to participate as part of the bigger search committee. Those notices have gone out. I have received quite a few responses personally at this point, and Amanda Ducharme is collecting them for us. But at the parent level, we are looking to get one from each level, elementary, middle school, and high school. I have found that some people really fit into all three of those buckets, so we'll have to figure that out. If we have more than three people interested that can make the commitment, we're going to have to choose randomly. Okay? But the individuals have a deadline of February 24 to respond to us. Then we'll have a little time to get it all set together, and they will start working on March 12. Question?
It's not a question. In addition, we're also asking two members of the community, preferably those without children in the school system, to also be a part of this mixed group.
And how are you reaching out to those?
That is going out, will be going out in probably next week's crier because we had to make a couple of changes, because I wanted to add the parents. And we have a letter that was just for one, but I wanted to add the parents also because I want to make sure that all parents are seeing this and not just those involved with the PACs. So, that should be going out next week into the crier.
Very good. Thank you.
We also reached out to the senior center. That's another way of hitting community members out there. So, we will be looking to seat 11 people on the search committee. And as I said, we will have that seated by the end of February. So, when they are joining us on March 12, they will be read to the charge, and they are supposed to say, yes, we accept the charge. And then they will begin their work. Short?
So, I just have a question about the range of three to five. How is that? How are they going to decide, you know, should it be three or four or five?
I think they're going to have to take a look at the candidates individually. And when I say that they start with a pool of eight to 10 and then narrow it down, it might be three. You know, we're charging them with the responsibility to come up with at least three for us to consider.
Do we have a preference of three or three to five?
I don't think it really matters.
It's up to them.
Yeah. Any further discussion on the charge? Should I read it? Okay. All right. Charge to the search committee. We, the Wilmington School Committee, hereby charge the Wilmington Superintendent Search Advisory Committee with the task of conducting interviews with selected candidates and, based upon the Wilmington School Committee's approved criteria, recommending to the Wilmington School Committee no less than three and no more than five individuals to be finalists for the job of superintendent of schools for the Wilmington Public Schools.
I motion to approve the charge to the search committee.
Second?
As stated.
Thank you.
And my friends?
All in favor? So moved. Okay.
One in favor, two abstain.
Two abstain. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Burns?
Okay. So, I am jumping around a little bit, and I apologize, but I wanted to make sure we got those votes taken care of. So, the next update to give you is that as of yesterday afternoon, we were at 398 responses to the survey, which is fabulous. Seventy percent of those are parents with students currently enrolled. So, that's great. That survey will remain live on the district's website through the end of January. And then, on February 6, which is a Thursday evening, at 7:00 at WCTV Studios, we are going to have an open public meeting. It will be led by our subcommittee, which is myself, Manny, and Leslie. Mike Gilbert will be joining us, and he is going to report on the results of the survey and the focus groups. And those two sets of information will lead to our criteria and candidate profile that we will be using to match candidates to. So, that's happening on February 6. Mark your calendars. Thank you, Leslie. Mark your calendars, and it will be at WCTV, not here. And it will be live. It is public. I referred to the focus groups. Mike Gilbert with MASC is in the process of conducting focus groups with our residents. He actually is starting with staff tomorrow, and he's got a long list of groups that he's going to be reaching out to. We are going to have a focus group for the community as a whole on the 28th, which I think is a Tuesday, January 28, Tuesday, 7:00 at the middle school. Okay? And that is open to all Wilmington residents to share their thoughts, feelings, what have you. Okay. Advertising for the position is going to be placed on School Spring and MASC's website. The deadline for candidate submissions is on March 7. I think that's going to go by faster than we think it is. We're moving right along. Moving right along. I did refer to us working on pulling together the search committee. We have sent out letters to various groups and stakeholders. They do have until the end of February to respond to us, but we're looking for a good mix of people, about 11 people. Okay? And I mentioned they'll get their charge on March 12. The biggest part for the search committee is the individuals really need to make the time commitment. They need to be there for every meeting. And it's going to start on March 12. They'll be done March 20. So, a brief stint of time, but a heavy duty, lots of work to be done during that time period. But the biggest thing is they do need to commit. They do need to be there for all of it. Okay? Questions?
So, between March 12 and March 20, they have to interview eight or more candidates?
Okay. Yep. And we, there may be some adjustments on the schedule, depending on what we get for candidates, what their schedules are like. That's the piece that we're shooting for. So, stay tuned. We may have more information February 6. Okay. At that point, I think I've gotten through all my quick things. I can turn the meeting back over.
Quickly.
Thank you.
Can we jump down for a few minutes, for a couple minutes?
All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Broussard, for filling us in. That's great. Our next item for the agenda would be the nine items on the consent agenda. We've got to find a way to do this, otherwise. Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. There are nine items on the consent agenda. They include the approval of the minutes from the January 8 regular session and the January 8 executive session, approval of an overnight field trip for the DECA competition, and an out-of-state field trip. Hopefully, we'll have students go into the out-of-state competition in May, also by DECA. And then warrants, L-26, 27, and 28, warrants payroll the 14th and 15th, warrant CB-04, FS-10 and FS-11, and sped warrants 9, 10, and 11.
Okay. Nicely arranged. Thank you.
I'll set fire. I think we have it right tonight.
It looks great. All right. The first four items on the agenda. Was everyone here at the last meeting? Yes. Right. Who's here? Okay. So, I take a motion for the first four items, one to four, on the consent agenda. Oh, and warrants L, the L, can we all do L?
Yep.
All right. Right through five.
The executive session.
I looked that over, and it can be released. Yeah. Did you agree it can be released? Yeah. Okay. So, now we'll go down to items one through five. I entertain a motion. Yes?
I make a motion to approve the first five items on our consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mrs. Burns? Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Warrants, payroll warrant of 114 and 115. Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion to approve payroll warrants 114, 2014, and 115, 2014.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mrs. Broussard, thank you. All those in favor? Three in favor and two abstain. Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Number seven, CB. That's one place. Are you the CB?
I am number seven and nine. So, if you wanted to take that now, combination, you can.
Number seven warrant CB and number nine warrants sped 9, 10, and 11. We entertain those. Mrs. Broussard?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant CB-04 and the sped warrants sped 09, sped 10, sped 11.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Carroll, thank you. All those in favor? One, two, three, four in favor and Mrs. Burns and all of a sudden, I can't remember the word, abstain. Thank you. And our last item, FS-10 and FS-11. Mrs. Bonnich?
I make a motion to approve the warrants FS-10 and FS-11.
Okay. And do we have the second? Mrs. Broussard? Okay. All those in favor? Four. And Mrs. Carroll will abstain. All right. Thank you so much. That was well organized. Our next item of business, I had just, before I came, gotten an email from the student representative, and she's unable to be here tonight. Very nice girl, because she asked if she, even though she was unable, she asked if it would be a problem. She's really a nice girl. Okay. So, our next item of business would be the superintendent's report.
I have six items in this report. First, a personnel report. We had a couple of resignations. Finance committee calendars in your packet. Want to call attention to all the school committee members that our budget will go before the finance committee on March 4. So, save that date, please. As you know, we're in the process of a new educator evaluation system, and part of the process calls for the superintendent to present a mid-cycle performance goal report. And I am in the process of meeting with all of the principals and central office to go over their goals as well. Kate and Jen and I had a couple of meetings today. They went very well, and we've got them booked over the next two weeks. The, as you know, the new evaluation system is data-driven, and we will be keeping track all year long of how everyone is doing. The way I did this was, it's similar to the model that the DESE sent out, which was in the packet I gave you at the beginning of the year when I talked about superintendent evaluations. Checks mean complete, the man working is under construction or woman working is under construction, and then upcoming steps of the blank boxes. And as far as strengthening, working on the educator evaluation, I want to applaud the Teachers Association and all the teachers. They have worked closely with us throughout this process. We did wonderful training in the summer. We have conducted a teacher-long training in September. We developed a district-wide improvement leadership team group with the Teachers Association to sort of answer questions and troubleshoot. We trained administrators on Evernote, which is a software system where you can sort of store your different examples of what administrators and teachers are doing. We developed a list of key elements from the teacher rubric that we're focused on that was agreed to by the association, and we're in the process of moving forward. I want to commend all the principals and evaluators. This is a very different way of looking at supervision evaluation, and I think everyone's doing a terrific job. And we're getting some really positive comments from teachers, examples of, you know, this makes sense to me. I feel good about this discussion. It's not show and tell, and I am hoping that you are going to see the results in the fall when MCAS comes out, as far as all the data-driven ones, and the impact that it's had on our students.
We thought when it first came up that this was going to take a lot more time than they might, you know, the state might think. Have we found that to be?
Well, in fact, the state has postponed the parent and student input into this for another year to get more information. I just actually got, before I came here, a letter from the commissioner on some updates on the educator evaluation, which I'll send out to all you. I didn't get the chance to read the whole thing, but it is taking longer. I think that before anything happens, you have to build trust, and I think we've succeeded in doing that, and it's been a great group to work with. But until we go through the whole cycle, we're not going to, you know, could be some kinks that we need to iron out, so we'll see. But the state is slowing it down a little bit, which is being most helpful.
Thank goodness.
So, the second goal was based on our MCAS assessment, and it is a work in progress. We, I'm trying to push our principals to collect data in their buildings now, based on students that we've identified as missing proficient or advanced by two to three points. That's the target group you want, because there are, you know, roughly, in a smaller school, 25 students in that group that if we just found the areas, the standard that they didn't do well in could boost them up to proficient, and the ones in proficient could boost them up to advanced. So, I'm requesting that principals sort of own those students and work with the teachers on improvements. And, you know, one of the things that we're really focused on this year that we haven't as much in the past is reteaching. When there is a standard that a student doesn't know, didn't get the first time around, instead of doing the same thing again or just moving on, finding other materials, ways of reteaching that standard. And Lisa Ippolito and Kathy Mackless have been terrific with assisting teachers and principals with, under the direction of Kate Burnham. I should've said that from the beginning. She's doing a great job with this, of finding resources for teachers to work with the students. So, that's where we are with the math goal. The third goal is our ELA goal. Again, this is another one that's going to take a little bit longer, because we've discovered that although there have been sort of rubrics for writing in the past, teachers don't really understand them. So, Kathy, there's going to be a WU on this, and we're really trying to give teachers the strategies to really be able to read a composition or read an open response, open response, response to a question, and be able to, using the rubric, grade it and figure out what it is that a student needs to know or is missing. So, this is huge, and it's going to take a long time, but I'm pleased with the progress we're making. The third goal, the fourth goal, excuse me, has to do with, again, student scoring and needs improvement or wanting, receiving reading support. And Mary Hood is taking a lead on this with Kathy Mackless and Kate around the reading piece. And we've been, Kate's been providing lots of professional development to staff, analyzed the MCAS results, seeking to understand where, what are the gaps. Our fifth goal has to do with data teams and encouraging buildings to put together data teams to really identify the areas of strength and weaknesses of our students, and that's ongoing. Our sixth goal has to do with the balanced responsible budget, and I think that we are right on target for that. And our last goal has to do with safety and security. And I actually want to pass out a letter that went home to all elementary parents and invite all of you, because on February 25, we are having a, inviting all elementary parents to come here about the ALICE protocols that we are implementing. And again, kudos to Bob Appoloni, who is chairing, chairs our safety committee. He's done an outstanding job with Terry Sheehan and Dennis Mahoney and our community resource officers, our representative from the fire department. We meet once a month. We are Scott Sensibar, in fact, this afternoon did the second of three trainings, pre-trainings of the staff. Today, he was at Wolfen Street North. And on our curriculum team release day on January 31, all of the elementary teachers will convene at the middle school, and we will go through scenarios, just as we did last year with the secondary staff. And that will include all custodians, food service, administrative assistants, ed assistants, and we will, again, practice those drills. The evening of the 25th will be an evening to respond to parents. I'm very excited. We have found some curriculum, which I think is really going to be wonderful for our K-2 teachers to share with students, which is a little story about safety that's age-appropriate. We will be able to answer questions that parents may have. As you know, at the upper grades, it's a little bit different, where students are empowered as well as the teachers. At the elementary lab level, the training really is around giving the adults the permission to make decisions. So, instead of shelter in place, a teacher, based on how we're now, would respond, which is over the loudspeaker, announcing if there's an intruder in the building, where that intruder is. So, if the teachers are on the west side of the building, the intruder's on the east side, and they have an exit right out, I'll use Beltwell, it's a perfect example, there's doors out of each classroom. They may decide it's safer to take their children out and go to the neighbor's house. So, it's more at the elementary level about teaching adults how to make decisions, good decisions. And we're hoping that we'll be able to preview the curriculum with the parents on the 25th.
This is a little preliminary, and I'm sure you'll go into it more in depth at that time. How will drills, what would drills look like in that, in the elementary school area? I mean, you don't have to go into detail, but just maybe.
It's a very good question. So, it could be that we would tell the students that we're going to have a drill and that we're going to pretend that there was someone in the building that shouldn't be there, and they're to follow their teacher lead.
Okay.
Something like that, that language.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Carroll? Are we doing this through all the schools now? Even the Beltwell?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Because when we first started, it was just in the upper.
Right. So, this is going to now pre-K to five. We're introducing them.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing in your packet is an update on district-determined measures. As you know, that's part of what you talked about, DESE. A requirement by the spring, we have to submit district-determined measures of development in all areas. And again, Assistant Superintendent Burnham has been doing an outstanding job working with coordinators, CTLs, and liaisons on developing standard-based assessments, portfolio assessments, and of course, assessments that we can test out. We will have to be submitting in the spring?
Okay.
In June to the DESE. We are piloting a few right now, but I think that as we move through this process, we'll learn, we'll get better at it in choosing district-determined measures that frankly are not always paper and pencil, but more performance-based and portfolio-based. I think there's lots of opportunities throughout the curricula to give students the opportunity to, instead of letting us know how much they've learned through a paper and pencil test, is doing a debate or standing up and doing a, like a Douglas, you know, Lincoln Douglas debates, that's a certain great way to prove competency. Obviously, for the arts, there's collecting different, you know, artwork or what they're doing right now down the hall, which is an open night. And, I mean, I watch. And, I mean, I walked down the hall this evening, heard four different groups of students practicing, and I thought, wow, you know, they're knocked it out of the park. So, we have to think of more ways of helping students think about how they can show their mastery. Another would be project-based. Given, given students, you know, business class, the, the end of the term could be setting up a business, including, you know, setting up the cost, the inventory. So, that's what we're moving towards. And I think what's most exciting, should be most exciting for all of you, because it is for me, although I won't be seeing it in person, is that's what this new high school is all about. And Linda Peters has led the high school staff this year, in really thinking about what performance-based learning is all about, and how do we measure it. And they're working very diligently on thinking about what that building is gonna look like next year, and how different departments are going to be working together. I, I need to tell you that, I have had, in the past three weeks, seven emails from superintendents across New England area, who are looking to build high schools, asking, saying they'd heard about what we're doing, and wanna, you know, meet or talk, or share how we got to where we do, because that's what they wanna do. So, it's pretty exciting for the students who will be going in that building.
Very exciting.
Hopefully, in February, which, at this point, we're on schedule, and we wished we had a little better weather. But Gil Bain, our O P M, is, is working hard to meet all the deadlines, so.
Do you have any questions or comments? I just have a couple. One of them, Kate, on the next slide, I don't know if you have this with you or not, an impact rating for every Wilmington educator. What's that mean, impact rating?
That's part of the evaluation system next year. That's why these D D Ms. If you recall, when Kate presented on the, on the valuation tool, at the beginning of the year, we can get you the slide, because there's a slide that talks about the two ratings teachers have. One of the ratings has to do with all of the collecting of the artifacts, and the observations, and the walkthroughs, and the, and the... The other rating is based on data, and it's based on these, whatever the district determines are the measures. That, that'll be the added piece.
Oh, and these, the two things that go to... And so, does every, every content area have, will in the end have, two pieces?
All teachers, all, all staff that are evaluated have a license through the Department of Ed, and are evaluated with the new evaluation system, have to have two district-determined measures that will yield data to determine their impact rating.
Okay, and then a third, the, third, I guess I went to a third. In this kind of, not just for us, but for, you know, statewide, when you were talking about the things that people could do, performances, et cetera, is there an ability to invite your evaluator in for the children's presentations, or does that not happen like it used to?
Oh, that's absolutely still an option.
And so, the teachers know that they could have, they have a day when the kids are gonna be performing, or giving presentations, and they can do it? Okay, good. I thought that was gone, I was really sad.
No.
Oh, good, all right, thank you.
And then I included in your, in the superintendent's report, our, the first draft, thank you, Julie, of our annual report, that will go into the town report for the previous year, and also the SEAMS annual report. So, I know, I kept MJ operating late, oh, the weekend, gave you a lot of reading to do.
I just have one thing.
This is Carol?
On the annual report, I love how it says, "Communication is a priority at the north." Teachers communicate with parents through email, and many teachers have created webpages and monthly newspaper, newsletters. That's great. Yep, more communication is better.
Excellent, thank you. And the SEAMS, did anyone have any questions or comments on the SEAMS? I think it's excellent.
It is very thorough, and I have to say, I think this was more in-depth and detailed with regard, it was nice to say. I, I do just wanted to, to make a statement with regards to the tuition compared to other programs in the state, that, as you know, that a lot of these programs are individualized per the child's need. So, in looking at some of the tuition rates, there are some schools that I am aware of offer different services, maybe in the same umbrella, per se, but that, the difference in tuition, it does, it, it all generates from the services that they deliver. So, not to, I think the collaboratives do a wonderful job, but again, it's, it's all on the individual child's need, at the time, as to which program suits that need, and pay for that specialization, so, thank you.
We certainly couldn't think of a question of anything that's missing out, at least I couldn't find anything missing out of that report, that I thought might be missing. It was very, very thorough. Does that, Mrs. Benton, I know you're involved in that group, does that go to, are all the communities receiving that, do they receive that report?
Yes, the Tencin communities receive that annual report, and the executive, you know, report when I include those. In fact, we had a meeting last Wednesday, and someone from the state auditor was supposed to attend the meeting, but she got sick, because we've been, you know how Suzanne Bump did all the changes on new regulations around collaboratives? But unfortunately, she couldn't, could not attend. There, I'm looking at around a 4% increase in their budget. But their budget is very different from our budgets, because their budget is based on student tuition. So, you're equaling off, you spend what you have in tuitions, basically, so it, they get to have a little bit more money than we do.
Oh, okay. And I'm just going to mention this, another thing that Mrs. Benton has been involved in, and it says right here at the top of the board of directors, this is Joanne Benton, Wilmington Chairperson. I think, she's got a lot of holes to plug.
I have a question.
Yes, this is Carol.
Do we have any Wilmington children there?
Yeah.
At SEAMS?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. About 33. There's, there's 10 different programs. I'll look up the number after it's fine.
Oh, yeah, I see Mary Hood, too, is on the planning.
Yes, she's representing, sped directors, we keep that from them, if we accept the chairman position, because if you're the chair, you're sped director, chair, for the year, so. Mary said to me, you didn't tell me.
She has to.
But they've been, I mean, the sped group, Mary's led some great professional development in, for our teachers, as well as the other teaching, it's, this professional development sort of reaches out to the 10 communities, so we've sent a lot of teachers to it.
Oh, that's excellent. All right, I think that was, that's the superintendent's report. All business?
Okay, so, I'm gonna ask you to go to the third page of the budget packet. Paul and I met with the town leader, a couple of weeks back, to talk about what he thought the town could support, as far as an increase in the school budget. When last we were here, I presented a budget that had a 4.3, 3% increase. We settled on a 3.5% increase, and very appreciative to the town. So, that meant we had to come back to you with, make a reduction, and how we are proposing to do that is, since last we met, we've had some more retirements, as you know, so there's a difference in the salaries. So, we're able to reduce by $114,000, and replacements to cut $53,000 there. We do have to, had to add in one ed assistant for, through special ed. And then we needed to cut another $104,000, and we're proposing to do that by reducing one teacher at the north, and one teacher at the west. Those teachers, we've known all along, have been looking at enrollment. With the reduction of one teacher at each of the school, it still keeps class sizes underneath 24 in every class. If we did not reduce those teachers, on one side of town, 4th grades would have been at 16 to 1 at the west, and at the north, they would have been at 23 to 1, so that's not, so we had to make adjustments. So, cutting a teacher at the north, and a teacher at the west equals it out.
Do they have any questions or comments?
So, how big will the classrooms be now?
No classroom will be larger than 23.
Okay.
And then, we're gonna, we trimmed down the textbook account by 22,000.
I think I have the same question that I had with the middle school, and when we're, when we're doing this, so if we're taking them out of a grade, it has to be the 4th or 5th grade, when we're taking them out of a grade, for this current class in front of us, that has a certain amount of students, then the upcoming classes, are we ever going back up, are we coming to, do you know what I'm trying to say?
Sure, so, that's a good question. So, see, what happened is, for example, Shoshine has six 3rd grades.
Right.
West has four, seven 4th grades, okay?
Okay.
Next year, those 3rd grades, there's only six grades going, so one teacher gets cut out of that, and moved up to the 5th grade, because there's an extra teacher going up in that grade.
So, we're actually not laying them off?
Oh, no, no one's getting laid off.
Thank you.
Yeah, no one's getting laid off.
I should've said that right at the beginning.
It's the moving, yeah.
I hate doing that.
No, no, it's the moving of around.
Oh, okay.
So, for example, again...
Much better to know.
Wildwood has six, seven kindergartens, next year, there'll be eight 1st grades at Wildwood. Wildwood will take, a, a 2nd grade teacher will go down to 1st grade...
Oh, yeah, that's great.
Because there's one less 2nd grade, that's how it works. So, it's, it's, it's easier to do it at the elementary level...
Yes.
Because it's truly based on the number of students. Now, still in the budget, which is very important, I know to the public and to you, is one kindergarten teacher and one aide, in case we have what happened last year at summer, which was the influx of students. The good news about that is it's not connected anywhere, so wherever it happens, I, I mean, I do believe that one of your tasks, something a superintendent never wants to do, so I don't have to do it, is the big D word, redistricting. I think you'd need to think about moving the lines at Glen Road over, because if you look at the population at the west right now, which has about 258 students, and you look at the population at the north, which is almost 400, and, and same thing with Shoshine, and Woburn Street, and Boutwell, and Wildwood, the whole premise behind the setup back when the middle school, new middle school opened, was to have parity, and you don't have it anymore. So, you're gonna need to think about moving the lines. And there's some ways you can do it, so as not to sort of upset the apple cart. And now's the time, you know, next fall, is to start thinking about where that line would be, notifying realtors, grandfathering, and present people on those streets. I have a lot of experience doing this, so I can talk about it, you know, so that it can, you can make a transition. And you will also find out that, when I had to do it in Lexington, one year, I asked for volunteers, and people that...
Some people will.
People do. You know, people have, because maybe their daycare is on the other side of town, or maybe they have a relative that's on the other side of town, and they'd rather, you know, be over there, so that is another way of, you know, starting the process.
It was one way of having people come to the meetings.
Yes, they will.
I went through this once before.
So, the budget that's gonna be, being recommended, that we will do the public hearing on February 12th, and that we will vote on then, still allows us to contain, maintain the current staffing levels that are in the contracts that you have approved for the teachers. To hire the human resource director, to support additional special ed classrooms at the high school level, continue building on the capacity of the O I T department with the new high school, create a part-time media production position at that new high school, in order to offer down the road, media production, and work with W C T V. We've got classes going on right now, with high school students, Sandra Curtin wrote me an email the other day, they're very successful. We've learned through experience that if you're gonna equip a building with expensive equipment, you need to staff that room, and also train more than one person in the building how to use it. So, what we wanna do is offer, down the road, an elective course in media production, and that person could also run the room as well. So, really excited about it. For those who don't know, W C T V is donating, is actually paying for all the equipment in that new media production room. So, it's a wonderful partnership, and we really want to focus on finding students that have a love of, of that, and they'll be able to do more communication and P R.
That's my question.
Also, again, this is sort of a trade-off, and a good trade-off, instead of contracting out services, hiring a B C B, another B C A specialist for the system...
What's that?
Behavior, applied behavior...
Analysis.
Analysis specialist.
Right, B C Bs are oversee, what they call pros, who do the A B A, teachers in classrooms, and they do assessments, functional behavioral assessments within district as well.
Continue to find all our mandates around specialized homeless and English-language learners, fund all our contractual agreements, and continue, continue to find cost-effective ways of doing things in the district. And lastly, fund our curriculum replacement plan. And Paul Monaco will presenting, be presenting on February 22nd, the first phase of our science adoption at the elementary level. Right in time, because the draft new science standards came out last week.
Oh, that's interesting.
On the last page, the other agreement we made with the town manager, is we're gonna postpone the purchase of the PAC laptop cots until fiscal '16. Again, the commissioner has made a concession, and has realized that all school districts are not gonna be able to implement PAC in the fall, so that'll give us another year to get ready, and, so we can postpone that purchase until then.
Excellent. Mrs. Benton, this, these are the capital expenses, are these all coming through warrant article?
The ones for F Y 15, which are the replacement of a van, two vans, the middle school replacement of computers, personal computers for all the teachers, and the elementary project, we're splitting up the completion of the mounting of elementary projectors between '15 and '16.
I apologize, I completely...
That's all right.
Missed read it.
We wanted you to see...
You've gone out, that's great.
A five-year plan.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions, or?
And this is probably, Paul might be able to, Mr. Jerry might be able to answer this as well. Just, as you know, by concerns with regards to the new mandated, the Common Core assessment piece, do we have money in the budget for those unexpected new things that we tend to get surprised with, with regards to this potential rollout? I mean, since it, they're releasing information slowly but surely, the, what's the word I'm looking for, the chances that we could be hit with additional, looking for additional funding to support this, whether it be field testing piece, or if this actually gets implemented, do we have enough room in the budget to, for unexpected expenses along that lines with unfunded mandates, per se? Maybe I should say generally, per se.
I'm gonna take it from step, okay? For the field test, we're okay, because our labs have the headphones, and we're only doing a small group of students. You're absolutely correct about, I mean, that there are gonna be costs, they're not in the budget, that's why this piece is, you know, the capital request was to respond to that. Burlington Public Schools have agreed to test all their students this spring with the online... the online PACC tests, using all kinds of devices, Chromebooks, iPads, notebooks, in order to see what hap, if it can be done. Because my biggest fear is we're going to get a class into the computer lab, get everybody set up, and turn on the program, and it's going to crash. Now, if that happens, we end for this year. We don't have to do anything else. But moving forward, and that's why I wanted to make sure we did the MCAS this year as well, I think we're going to learn a lot from the Burlington pilot. And let me just say this, Paul does not have a reserve of funds in this budget. I have to beg, beg, beg if something comes up this time of year that I want to purchase because, now let him answer the question. Do you have any money for us, Paul?
Maybe in the beer.
Have any money for us?
Unfortunately, no.
I think what's troubling
He yells at me.
I think what's troubling though, too, is all this, tens of thousands of dollars we were investing in this and not knowing whether or not the state will accept it at the end result is just a bit troubling at best. And so, thank you, though.
Stay tuned, and thank you for your work on this. I mean, it's going to be very interesting to see where it all goes
It certainly will be.
because, again, we're going to have a change in leadership at the state level, which means probably a change in
Oh.
Commissioner.
Changes the game up there, the players, so.
Wouldn't that be interesting? Thank you. Any other questions on this area? Well, good, thank you, Mrs. Benton.
I'd like to invite Principal Linda Peters up to the table to present the changes in the program of studies.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. I did list the changes, but I'd like to review them in case you have any questions. Some of the changes are not highlighted because they're simply formatting changes and date changes, so I didn't bother to highlight those. Do have a couple of paragraphs on page six. I did rewrite one of them. What I was trying to do on that page was make the distinction between actually withdrawing from a course and taking another course, and then the difference between that and students that may want to change a level, either drop a level or raise a level, whether it's by a teacher recommendation, or whether it's a student request or a parent request. So I tried to, on that page, just clear that up so that there was a distinction between those two changes in schedule, which can impact a student's schedule. So I did want to make some recommendations regarding that. The next major change is not something we haven't done before, it's on page twelve. We have had student classroom internships for the last several years, but it's never been indicated in any form, in any written form. So Mr. Mahoney wrote this particular paragraph and the criteria and guidelines for what's meant by a student classroom internship, which has worked out very well with many students at the high schools, so we did want to keep it, but we didn't want the guidelines to actually be in writing. There are just a couple of changes in the business department. The business communication course is actually what used to be the speak-up class, which was formerly in the performing arts department. It was changed to the business department this year and is called speak-up. But the teacher who teaches it feels that it could be more of a business communication and rewrote the description and is also working on a curriculum that is more aligned to business and not performance. So that is in place of speak-up, but it's actually a fairly different course than speak-up. It does go along with our goal for communication as well. The business department also did rewrite their introductory paragraph on page thirteen. The English department, although they did not change their current program, did request, two teachers in the department requested to offer two semester courses, one in futuristic fiction and the other in memoir, nonfiction, and the creative essay. I agreed to that just because I think it does give students more options for electives. And they sound like great courses.
I'd love to take both of them.
Yeah, I would too, actually. The next section on world languages, the first thing is that they, the department did want to change the title from foreign language to world languages, which is appropriate. Some of the changes there really are prerequisite changes, and there is, there are two courses that we took out of the program. At this time, the numbers from the middle school, the projection, projected numbers from the middle school, doesn't look like we would need a French one or an Italian one at the high school. It doesn't mean that we won't offer it if it's needed, but at this time, it just doesn't seem that the number's warranted, so we did take those out. The prerequisites are just change, most of them are really just adding teacher recommendation and the approval of the CTL, which they felt was necessary to make the move from, you know, one on his level to the next on his level.
Mrs. Peters, could I go back one second? In the going, taking out the Italian one in the first level of the languages?
Yes.
Are there many students who start their language in the high school, or that means they aren't, that they've done them basically in the middle school?
Right, and I believe that Mr. Brown did a survey at the middle school, and it seemed that there were only two students that would want to take Italian as a starter at the high school, and only two or three in French. So there are many students in French and Italian, and they'll come up and take French two and Italian two.
Wow, that's amazing. I don't think we were realizing that.
Mm-hmm.
It's great, thank you for looking into that.
Mrs. Brown, how does that work out if you haven't had Italian one? How do you become a sophomore and go right into Italian two without knowing the basics of the language?
They have it in the middle school.
Oh, but if they don't, you, but you're saying there's only one or, I just didn't know, I'm trying to figure out how to just, I mean, you have to have a bigger number, I would assume.
Right, and now those students, those two students who are thinking they want to take Italian one at the high school, we don't have enough numbers to offer it, and that's why we took it out. So those students could go into Spanish one if they have not already started a language at the middle school. We are still offering Spanish one as an option.
All right, I'm just trying to
I know you're thinking the same thing, I was thinking, if someone changed their mind and by then wanted to take it. But if they don't have the number of people for the course, we can't run the course anyway.
But I have enough, but I have enough number for the sec, the second year piece is where I'm, I think I'm
Yes.
tripping.
Because they took it at the middle school.
They're taking it at the middle school.
These are students at the middle school who took
And you seem to have a larger number at that?
Maybe took French.
Yeah.
And decided now they'd like to do it Italian.
Okay, oh, you know, is it that maybe I'm thinking that it's, when I was, and I did French three years and I really can't speak, but I'm thinking that Italian two would be a second tier up, as opposed to maybe, as opposed to, there must be an introductory piece for those who might switch from French to Italian in high schools, that?
But we don't, there is not enough students
There isn't, okay, so it is a second, okay.
If, I think what I heard is if there were twenty students that wanted it, we would re-look at it, operate.
Yeah, it just didn't seem that the number's warranted keeping those in. We could have kept the number.
Absolutely, no, absolutely, I would, you know.
Our next change is, I think there was only one change in the math area, and that was just our reassigning Algebra III to an A-level as opposed to a B-level course. It does meet standards for an A-level course, so we did want to make it an A-level course. That was the only change in the math program. There were quite a few changes in the visual arts program, and that is in preparation for the transition to the high school. It's not just, I believe, the names of the courses, they've all changed, but also a lot of descriptions have changed. They are going to be more digital, there's going to be different, a whole different set of equipment at the new high school, so I think they're preparing for that. So there are a lot of changes in that department. The only change that was made in the performing arts department was changing the music theory class to a full-year course as opposed to a half-year course, and that was requested by Mr. Luciana. And I think it is because he has students who are interested in taking it for a full year, so it does give him that option. Not many changes in the science courses, just a change in the prerequisite for the AP chemistry, and that is because they ran the course this year, and they have decided that they would like a math requirement there as well, a math prerequisite, to be eligible for the AP course, the AP chemistry course. In the technology area, we did not really change the courses, they did change the title. Introduction to Technology is changed to Introduction to Engineering. And they are keeping that a full-year course, but the other courses, the architectural design and the computer aided design, the CAD courses, they are going to have half-year courses on those. Just again, to have, they have a lot of students that are interested in those courses but can't fit them in for a whole year, so they're offering it for a half a year.
And my understanding, excuse me, Linda, is the Introduction to Engineering is, could fulfill the MCAS science?
It, it's the technology engineering MCAS, it does prepare them for that, yes.
Which for some kids is the way to go.
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's really it. There are no changes in social studies, and again, no real changes in the application for the AP courses, other than we added that if there was an interview required, it could be with not just the CTL, but also the AP teacher. So sometimes that's more helpful, to have the teacher actually interview the student, so. That's pretty much the changes, it's really just updates more than anything else.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
We need, well
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing. Around this time, we always end up talking a little bit about AP courses and how many we offer as opposed to how many we'd like to, and I would never have expected any this year, any changes, but in your mind, do you see us adding one or two AP courses, or do you feel that we're equipped at this point?
I think we're in a good place. The only one I would, actually, there are two that I'd like to think about over the next several years, AP physics, I'd like to get that back in. And I think that that's a good possibility with the physics program that we have now. We only have one physics teacher, so it might be difficult, but I think eventually we will have the need for an AP physics. I'd also like to think of an AP statistics course at some point as well in the math department.
Not that I'm sorry I asked, but those are the two, it's, no, excellent. I think it's so interesting, it's so good that we have such a high school that has so many different offerings, and I notice, anyone looking through the handbook, the number of musical and performing arts, et cetera, that are offered here, that's not normal in a high, actually, normal is a bad word, that's not the usual thing in a high school. And I think it's fantastic because we have so many kids who are talented, and there's places for them to go in the high school. I think that's great. So we will entertain a motion to accept the high school program of studies. Mrs. Burns?
Make a motion to accept the high school program of studies.
And a second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda?
I think you're having an eighth grade night soon.
We have an eighth grade program of studies night in March.
In March.
We have one for the, the upperclassmen in February.
And I'd like to inform all of you, because I think this is very exciting, that the applications to Shawshing Tech are down by forty-five students. And Superintendent Lyons asked me why, and I said, it's simple, new high school. He says, what do you mean new high school? Other schools have done it. I said, we have been talking to the community for three years about what this new high school is all about. And I think that some of the programs that Linda talked about, the changes in the descriptions, changes with the classes, is I think we are going to see an increase in our freshman class next year, so I'm very excited. I think it's wonderful.
I think so, too. When they compare with other communities and what they're offering, their high schools are offering, they're going to be saying that this is an excellent bang for your buck at this school.
Great job, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me see, our next item of business is public comment. Okay, and the subcommittee reports, we started the night out with the superintendent's search report, and policy subcommittee will be
We're meeting tomorrow. Talking about the substance abuse screening policy.
Excellent, okay.
Can I have one?
Oh, good.
WEF has finalized the spelling beam, March twenty-first, Friday night, six o'clock, Villanova Hall. It should be on their website and on Facebook soon. So everybody go and sign up, and it's a great program. We all went last year, we had a lot of fun, so.
That was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Brown.
One addition as well.
Sure.
Again, February fourth, there's not going to be a PACC forum. I will be meeting with the Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, along with Representative Gordon, Ms. Sally, hopefully Senator Tarr, along with other legislators from Lexington and the surrounding areas that are near ours, at the BSEA offices, at one o'clock, to discuss PACC and the impacts and continuing difficulties districts face. We're going to have a sit-down, so to speak, and address some of these concerns, and funding is one of them as well, going ahead, but I just, anybody interested, any administrators, I'm hoping to have a superintendent from Hingham come up, he was quite interested in speaking to the commissioner as well, to address some of these concerns. Representative Gordon is also bringing an educator from the community, I believe it's going to be Burlington, along with another administrator, I'm not quite sure at this point, but so, so that is where it's at, and I'm hoping to get a couple more people, it'll be a small meeting of sorts, but I'm giving it open.
Half the people in the state are going, how did she manage that? You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
That's not easily done, what you did.
See, what I execute, that's my biggest challenge right now, so. Hope it's
Perhaps if we had any specifics that we would
If there is anything, and I'll be sitting down with Superintendent Benton tomorrow just to discuss any updates, because the forum that Medford was hosting last night was canceled, so I was hoping to attend that because I want to be, I just want to make sure that I'm not behind the game ball when it comes to the newest of information that they're
Certainly taking a lot of your time, we appreciate what you're doing, your efforts.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, we all set? Entertain a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Bushad?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Here we go, unanimous. Good night.
Good night.
Just very much.